Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, guests, neighbors, and the holiday crowd. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Flugerville City Council on November 26th to order. If you'll please stand for the pledge and remain standing for a moment of silence.
(inaudible) for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Before we start the meeting this evening, although it's not on the agenda, I don't think I'd be violating laws, council. But I'd like to welcome council member Melody Ryan to her first meeting and welcome her aboard. And you happen to be the 23rd council member that I've had the privilege to serve with, so welcome.
Thank you.
She doesn't know what she got her someone to. No, just kidding. Our first item is public comment. Trista, we have none. All right, so we'll skip public comment. This evening, item number four is a presentation of the, on the municipal court. And I think we have two, we have the judge and the court administrator. Nanny?
Hi, good evening, mayor, council, city manager. Thank you for allowing us to be here this evening to make a presentation of our court and our staff and what we do. First, I'd like to introduce you to the municipal court team. We have Lindsay Snyder, who's our deputy court clerk one. She has been with the city for three years. We also have Cindy Daniels. She's been with the city for two and a half years with the municipal court, moved from the billing department over to the municipal court for eight, eight months now. We have Linda Lopez, who is our deputy court clerk. She is, been with the city for seven months. And then I've been with the city for five months. We do have a current vacancy, which we are hopeful that we'll get that filled here in the next month or two. Are together, we all ensure that every defendant case is processed efficiently and effectively. Next, I'd like to introduce you to the judicial staff. We have Judge Shan here, who's our presiding judge. We also have our new member, which is our associate judge Christina Rojas Stumpel. Ms. Stumpel joined us in September, and she was sworn in on September of this year.
In this picture, actually.
Yes. They both bring a wealth of experience and expertise, so we are very lucky to have them both. The Flugerville Municipal Court operates as a judicial branch of the city of Flugerville. The court hears Class C misdemeanor criminal cases, including traffic violations, city ordinance violations, fine only offenses and limited civil cases. In the last 12 months, the municipal court, we had 4,713 cases filed in our court. We also had 126 city ordinance violations and 144 juvenile cases. What I did not include here was the warrants that we processed. We processed the total of 1,238 Class C misdemeanor warrants. One of the things that we focus a lot is the being available to our defendants. We think we were supposed to be there 24/7, even though our business hours are Monday through Friday from 8 to 5. We ensure that those defendants that are able to come to the window are able to take care of their business at the window with the deputy court clerk. If, if they're not able to come to the window, they can always send us an email. All our notices are done by either email or by mail. Those defendants that have busy schedules and are unable to come during our business hours, we have options available online. So this last 12 months, we had 3,374 online payments. We had 234 driving safety course requests online, and we had 189 online extensions. So the, the more technology we use nowadays, it's better for the defendant. It's more, it's at the fingertips, basically. One of the things that we've noticed is very, has been working very well, and we're pushing that every day more and more, is the text messages. So we use the text messages to notify defendants of court dates, of payment reminders, documents that they need to submit. Anything that has passed due, we notify them as well. We also make sure that they get notification if a warrant gets processed or when a warrant is about to be processed. Our main goal is compliance. So the more we can do to get notifications to the defendants, it's better for, an outcome for us. This year alone, or in the last 12 months, we were able to send 12,606 text messages, which we, huge impact, and it helps process those cases on a timely manner.
What software do you utilize for the text messaging?
We use Tyler technology. So we're able to send the text messages at no cost to the city. So that is a bundle that we have. But we do use Tyler technology, and we're version nine and in code currently.
I wish they were as efficient in their other legal software, so.
So in order to allow defendants the right to due process, we do hold dockets three days per month. Usually that, those dates consist of from, starting at 8:30, and it could go up to 6:30, even 8 o'clock. And then the 11 dockets that you see here are available. We don't hold every docket every month. On a regular basis, we have about six dockets that we hold on a monthly basis. The other five are scheduled on an as-needed basis. In the last 12 months, the court saw 2,246 cases that came in through court. So our judge or prosecutor are very busy handling those cases. One of the things that the city and the department has focused a lot is the self-development and training, making sure that our clerks are well-trained. They attend TMCEC annual trainings. They also attend any webinars that are available and local trainings. I am very proud to announce that one of our deputy court clerks, Lindsay Snyder, did obtain her Level 1 certification through TMCEC. We also had two of the other clerks that tested for their Level 1 last month. So I am, we're still waiting for their results to come back. But I am very hopeful that they, and confident that they pass. So hopefully next year we'll be here and we'll all be certified. The other thing that I'd like to share with you is the municipal court, court did receive the Service First Award this year during our Flugerville University. So we are very, very proud and humbled to have received that. Judge Shan is going to present to you a little bit about our teen court and what the program has been doing in the last year.
I know you all thought you could get through this without having to hear about teen court again, but I have to give at least a little blurb update. We're doing very, very well. We have 14 fabulous volunteers who are showing up monthly to hear between four and five cases in an evening. They do a fantastic job. We have had 2018 defendants go through the program in the past year. And keep in mind, we did not meet over the summer. It's just during the school year. Of those 28, 21 completed the program and had their cases dismissed. And not one of them has re-offended, to our knowledge. Not been archway, anyway. There may be a slight change in the way we run teen court January 1st. That's because of a new requirement for a youth diversion program. The only real substantial change that you'll see is that one of our clerks will have to be designated as a juvenile case manager, meaning what they will do is they'll have a list of juveniles before the court dates are given. The case manager reaches out to each qualified juvenile to say, hey, these diversion programs are available. Are you interested? If they're interested, they'll be removed entirely from the criminal docket. They wouldn't have to appear in court and moved over to the teen court diversion program, which keeps the entire thing out of the criminal system, which I'm really excited about.
How many do you have that move over to diversion and then those that opt not to do that?
So it depends. Teen court's more work than mom or dad writing a check.
Right.
And some kids are real motivated by the fact that it's only $20, and it's a complete dismissal. And some think it'd be easier to take the driver's safety course or just pay the fine. I really push teen court because I think it's a different level of accountability, and it has really good results. But we can't, it is voluntary. We can't make them do it. Right now, we run about, I'd say 40% of the ones we offer into taking it.
And for the, for them to participate in the teen court, they have to have a sign off by the parents, I'm assuming?
Correct, absolutely. Yes, every decision, that's why they're required to show up with the parent, is because they're minors and they want the parent to be involved in the decision. And again, because it is more work. You know, they're signing the parent up to take them sometimes to community service or to pay for classes. And I want it to be something, you know, that they both agree on since it affects the whole family.
Awesome. I wanted to know if you were working with Judge Denise Hernandez with the diversion programs. Judge Denise Hernandez, how are you doing your diversion programs?
So we have kind of a sample of, basically the diversion program we have to have in place is we have to have an offering that we reach out to any juvenile charged with a non-moving violation, to see if they qualify. We've not been working with anyone other than TMCEC to develop it. There's a variety of options we'll have. You know, it doesn't have to be teen court, although that's kind of the one we already have in place.
Sure.
Some people may not be a fit for teen court. In some instances, we can say, hey, I'd like you to do 12 counseling sessions. Or I'd like you to do, you know, a class. Or I'd like you to do something more personal that, you know, maybe there's a substance abuse issue. You know, we can be more personal with our solutions without bringing the child into the criminal system.
Awesome. Will you have to hire a case manager, or is this someone that will, that is already within?
Well, we have that fourth slot open. We're very hopeful that we find a candidate that will be a fit for everything.
Thank you.
Was that position filled previously, or is this a new assignment to that position?
Strangely enough, there is money allocated for the position with every citation. It just goes into a separate account that Dana can tell you a little more about. But we have not had that position here before.
Brenda did fill it for a few months, and then we had that clerk got a better opportunity, so she moved on to another city. If we are the new person that we're looking into hiring, if they work well, then we'll be able to train them. And how so, it's not somebody we would hire specifically for that. We're willing to train for that position.
So the headcount is, is existing, but the responsibilities for youth diversion, that's, that's not new?
Correct.
And we feel like we can handle the additional responsibilities, the additional work within our current personnel staffing model?
Yes.
Okay. Will, will we eventually need to hire additional staff specifically for this?
Looking into the future, because Flugerville is growing, I anticipate that we're going to be seeing more citations. We just never know with the juveniles. So it, it's month to month, it varies. For example, last month, we saw four cases. The previous month, we saw 12 cases. So it, it just depends on what's going on. A lot of those cases are coming from Flugerville ISD. So it just depends on, you know, if there's vacation, obviously we're gonna, we're not gonna see a lot of, a lot of juvenile cases being filed.
So to Doug's point, that's what, so we're cool with other duties as assigned right now?
Right.
But you're telling us in the future?
In the future, yes. I would anticipate that we would need additional staff.
And I know this is a new requirement from the state based on legislation. So we might have been talking earlier about unfunded mandates from the state. But this in particular, it sounds like we actually do get some funding from the citation to cover the expense of the juvenile case manager?
Right. Every case that is paid, there's $5 that's allocated towards that, that fund. So.
Not a whole lot of cases.
Not a whole lot.
So we're, we're talking about 100 bucks a year on this one that we get. Okay, so unfunded mandate, gotcha.
We, we do, we do get, to be fair, we do get a percentage, you know, that's allocated to us from every single case that settles, from the level, another reason why we try to tell people to settle cases as opposed to actually go to trial on these things. But even that amounts, I'm not gonna say de minimis, but yeah, I mean, we're not, that's what, let's make it clear for the audience, no one's getting rich prosecuting people on tickets or anything else over here. That's just, that's a lie. That never happens. No city does that to go ahead and make money over there as well. It's not Dukes of Hazzard.
That's the end of our presentation. We are here to answer any additional questions you may have.
Oh, you thought we'd wait for questions?
You do mostly see misdemeanors. What percentage of those are not traffic-related, not vehicle offenses?
Of the juvenile or overall?
Of, of the seen misdemeanors.
Overall? Probably, ebbs and flows. I'd say 15?
I don't know. We can get that number to you. But yeah, if we're talking about traffic offenses, that is something we can get that, that number. You know, we, we see penal cases, public intoxication, open container, fighting. So we can, we can break it down into the total.
But it's a, a significant number are not traffic or traffic-related offenses?
No, our majority cases that we see are traffic.
Right, but a significant minor.
Can you give me like an order of magnitude? Is it, is it 15 or 50?
I would guess more than 15%.
More, more than 15?
If I'm going to just make a real rough guess.
Okay. That, that's helpful.
Thank you.
I had a question about the certification. Can you explain a little bit more about what that means and why that's a benefit to the department?
So TMCEC, in conjunction with TCCA, TMCEC is our Texas Municipal Court Education Center, and Texas Court Clerk Association, they offer a program to allow clerks to be certified. The levels are, the levels available are Level 1, Level 2, and Level 3. Level 1 is a basic knowledge of how the court functions. Level 2 is more in detail, for example, juveniles, bond forfeitures. The test consists of about 400 questions. It's four hours long. Typically, it takes a Level 1 clerk probably about two years to obtain her Level 1. If they're fast enough, quick learners, it could be less. Level 2 will probably take another two years before they get the training. There's a study guide they go through. And it consists of three sections each chapter, or each test. Level 3 usually takes about five to seven years before someone can obtain their Level 3 certification. The Level 3 consists of, I believe they've upped it to 17 books that the clerk has to read. There's no study guide for it. And it also consists of about 400 questions.
So if you were a Level 3, and you said clerk, but wouldn't that actually accelerate their career because of not only their experience, because you're talking about a long timeframe? So they might end up being a court administrator?
Right.
Or potentially, or whatever other opportunities are out there that are beyond a Level 3 certification?
It's my understanding there's only a handful of Level 3s in the state.
I would imagine.
Yeah, yes.
It's, it's not a small accomplish.
Dana is a Level 3.
I was gonna say, how many, how many Level 3s do we have?
In the room?
There's, there's less than 200 in the state of Texas.
And we've got one of them. That's, that's amazing.
Yeah. So we do push our clerks to, to obtain their certification. And not only benefits them, it benefits the city, the department, so.
Absolutely.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks very much.
Fabulous.
All right. That brings us to the consent agenda. Counsel, any items you wish to pull? And wait for Trista to get her note pad out.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull 5A as an Alpha, D as an Delta, E as an Epsilon, and I as an India.
I heard 5A, D is in Delta.
A, D, E, and I.
D, E, and I.
You may read the consent.
Is that everything?
It is.
Items 5A, 5D, 5E, and 5I have been pulled from the consent agenda. 5B is approving an ordinance on first reading with a caption reading. An ordinance of the city of Flugerville, Texas, amending and updating Chapter 53 Water and Sewers, reclaimed water regulations, providing cumulative repealer and severability clauses, providing for open meeting and establishing an effective date. 5C, approving an ordinance on second reading with a caption reading, an ordinance of the city of Flugerville, Texas, amending the city's code of ordinances, Chapter 152, subchapter B, roadway impact fees, assessment of impact fees, to include provisions for newly annexed areas containing severability and repealer clauses and providing for an effective date. Again, items 5A, 5D, 5E, and 5I have been pulled. All remaining items may be acted upon in a single motion.
Move to approve?
Second.
Have a motion second to approve the consent agenda.
I know. There you go.
You guys are ahead of me. Discuss and consider, item 6A is discuss and consider action to approve the appointment of Jerry Jones as the executive director of the Flugerville Community Development Corporation. Terry?
Where is Jerry Jones?
Yes, where is Jerry?
Don't steal my thunder. Not to make an introduction, good evening, mayor and council. Of course, tonight's item is to consider the appointment of Jerry Jones as the executive director of the Flugerville Community Development Corporation. With over a decade of experience in economic development and community engagement, his experiences from his work in Louisiana, combined with his accomplishments for the city of Richmond, Texas, resulted in the board unanimously selecting Jones as our final candidate. PCDC's recommendation is the approval of this appointment this evening. And of course, Jerry is here with us tonight. I'm proud to introduce you to Jerry Jones.
Good evening, everyone. As she said, my name is Jerry Jones, and extremely happy to be here. So I don't know if the process, if anyone has any questions. Definitely open and ready to provide a feasible answer, I guess you could say.
A feasible answer. I'll try.
Mr. Jones, I read your resume, and it's very impressive. I'm just concerned about the, the gap between Richmond and Flugerville. Richmond is about the size Flugerville was 25 years ago.
That, that's a good point. City of Richmond is about 12,600, whereas Flugerville is about 65,000. The difference that I would share with you is, is that when it comes to Richmond, we tend to work inside the city limits as well as the ETJ. And just one mud by itself is about 30,000 people. And so if the city was ever to want to incorporate all of the ETJ that's already developed with mugs that have been around for almost three to four decades now at this point, it would be a much larger city. So on paper, I have to report that the city limits is 12,000, but I work not only in the city limits, but also in the ETJ as well.
Tell us a little bit about your background. Outside of, I saw some obnoxious university that's across the red, that you have an, you have a degree from. I thought that everything else looked quite well and significant over there.
You know, I'm extremely excited about that school. It's the only, it's the only system, only HBCU system in the country. So I mean, I, I don't know, I kind of, kind of, I'm, I really have to ask you later on what school.
Oh, let's be clear. We ain't talking about Southern.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. Well then, now I'm, now I'm open to whoever it is that you're talking about at that point. We talking about University of Oklahoma?
Always.
They have the top economic development program. That's the only reason why I went there.
You mean over UT?
The economic development.
1974 is the longest-standing economic program in the, I'm staying out of the whole UT conversation. I've learned, I've learned my lesson. The UT is real. Texas A&amp;M is real. I, I stay completely out of that. I, I tell people all the time, I can tell you exactly who's gonna win the game. I will tell you who's gonna win the Texas A&amp;M versus. I will tell you who's going to win the Texas A&amp;M versus Texas game. I can tell you right now, and that is the team with the most points at the end of the game. That is exactly where I stay with it. Nope. I learned that lesson four years ago. It's just not smart.
Counsel, any other questions you may have?
Well, I, I feel inclined to, to make a joke about your name, but I'm not sure that that would be appropriate. So I'm wondering, do we need to rename the, the title from executive director to general manager?
No.
No, because we want to succeed.
No, I, I, thank you. I was getting ready to say, I actually want to win.
Because if you were today.
I am probably not doing myself any favors after right now.
I would like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the appointment of Jerry Jones as the executive director of the Flugerville Community Development Corporation.
Second, and I just laugh when I hear that name every time.
We'll get over it in time, I'm sure.
Make sure everyone hears that name in Texas.
That's right. It'll open doors for you.
Oh, it will.
Mr. Jones, welcome to Flugerville.
Yeah, thank you all so much.
So excited to have you. Congratulations on the soon-to-be arrival of your new baby?
December 29. I'm looking forward to it. She's watching online. I didn't even know that she would, but she shared with me before we got, came inside that she would be watching online. So she's, I'm extremely excited about being dad part two, so.
And we welcome you to the family of Flugerville.
Congratulations.
And I get a chance to finally misspell, you know, a few words. I like that. So I'm excited about that part. That was my favorite part about it.
Or maybe it's the proper spelling. Everyone else has it wrong.
I like that.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Welcome.
Six B is a presentation regarding the Flugerville Community Development Corporation, FY '24, fourth quarter financial reports. Tracy?
Good evening, Tracy Baldwin, Finance Director. I'm here to review the fiscal '24 fourth quarter PCDC reports. This is a preliminary report, so we've noted that in the, in the packet, there will be final adjustments for, before the audit is conducted. But we did end the year strong. Total revenue exceeded budget 3.6. 2.8 of that was land sales revenue. Sales tax was 99% against budget. Expenditures were below budget by 2.1, and development incentives and capital projects had something to do with that 2.1. So we just, the capital projects that we budgeted didn't start as early in the year, so did not use as much of that budget. And then there was some development incentives that did not meet the requirements, so we did not expend that, those funds.
Do those incentives roll to the next year, or is that a use it or lose it incentive?
I believe most of them are use it or lose it, unless the board approves.
Unless they've proven extension, okay. That's my understanding from, from my time there, but wanted to make sure it doesn't change.
So they can reinstate them if they'd like.
I think it's, it's important. It helps us predict and, and plan and create our budget if we know what can be distributed this year, and we don't have to worry about carrying it in future years. So that was always a big, big thing for me. So thank you.
It's a, it's a nice use for accountability, too.
We, we meet expectations.
I believe that's it.
You're done? Okay.
Wow.
Cool. You have any other questions, counsel, before Tracy leaves? All right, thank you.
For Thanksgiving?
For Thanksgiving. Happy Thanksgiving. Item six C is discuss and consider action to approve a resolution establishing a veterans' task force. And this was an item that I had proposed. We had a work session on it, actually, we, I think it was before, a council meeting before, had a work session. We do have representatives here from the, actually, a couple of organizations, and they're veteran-related, the DAV, Disability Veterans Organization, and the VFW post that we currently have. I'm sorry?
American Legion.
American Legion, I'm sorry. I get them confused. And actually, Ellen, if you want to come forward and kind of give a brief on it?
Good evening.
If anybody has any questions, I am here to entertain any questions that anyone has.
I have a question. What are your goals for this first year?
First year is going to be, well, the, the first thing that we will do is, at the next council meeting, we will have our bylaws. Our bylaws are already, the, 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 the task force already has the bylaws 90% done. So we want to be accountable to you all. So many things we need to do next year. The federal organizations had a Veterans Resource and Claims Fair in August, so we will want to do that. We are going to start to implement Veterans Networking Night once a month, and we will start to push for awareness of our scholarship programs that, that both, that both veteran organizations have, because education's expensive.
So this is the, the first organization of, of this type in Flugerville. It's, I mean, outside of the veterans groups that are in Flugerville, which make a large portion of our community. As a matter of fact, we have a large veteran population, and the DAV and the American Legion have been very instrumental in being active in our community, municipal events, public events, and have been a very strong feature of what Flugerville is about. So this is kind of more formalizing an organization that focuses maybe driving those initiatives and goals a little deeper in our community.
Mayor, I love the idea of a task force. Love the idea of giving the advice and concerns. I like what you said, just formalizing something that's been there for years, and, you know, I'm excited to see y'all get started and see what we can do to help and advise and guidance you give us.
I, I have a question. I have some people who are interested in being a part of this task force. How would others get involved or in, in your mission, other veterans here in the city?
So as of, for the first year, on, so we have, we are going to have six members. Five members will be, five members must be veterans of the United States Armed Services and active members of the recognized veterans organizations within Flugerville. So either the DAV or the American Legion. The six member shall be a spouse or family member of a vet, of a veteran residing in Flugerville.
But outside of that, anybody can get involved with the task force as a resource or community interest or whatever it may be.
Okay.
Yes, they'll be able to. One of the things that we'll do is after, probably before the beginning of the year, we'll have a website up, so people will be able to contact us, and then we'll be able to assist them however they need it.
Will your meetings be posted? People able to attend?
Yes, yes, sir.
Minutes will be taken.
And we'll, we'll, we'll put on meeting, minute, meetings up and everything.
The city will not be posting it as it is related to the Open Meetings Act. It's not the same type of posting, so where they would post it, I'm, I'm not sure.
He said he was going to have a website.
Yeah, so like with the DAV, I, I know for the DAV, because I'm the webmaster for that, whenever we have a meeting, I post the meeting minutes for all members, because then the DAV, we actually have close to 700 members in our organization, but only around 250 to 300 live in Flugerville. So they reach out to, they reach out to us, hey, what happens at the meeting? The meeting minute, the meeting minutes are there for everybody.
So we could be helpful by whenever you have these meetings, kind of acting as a microphone or megaphone to go ahead and let other people know exactly where it is.
So will the events then be publicized with, like on city Facebook, or, or how do, that, what you organize, you know, the scholarship or the events? How, is that going to be shared on social media as well to raise awareness?
Yes, so when we had the Flugerville Veterans Resource Fair, we hit up the Chamber of Con, Chamber of Commerce, and I reached out to the, to the city so they can post it on their Facebook and their social media sites. So anything that we do, you guys will be involved in, in, in the aspect of, you, you have the visibility, and it's a partnership. We are here to help you.
And I like what you said, just partnership, because I think what we're looking at is, you know, there'll be information that'll be going back and forth, and basically, the task force serves as a conduit to be able to provide information, get information, and also, when you come to present before council, perhaps some recommendations in areas that we need to observe or recognize in terms of how the city can best service veterans in our community. And whether, I know we have a active veterans recruitment program, and there could be other things that could be incorporated.
Most definitely. The most important thing is we are, with this task force, we are taking that vacuum between Round Rock and Austin away, because Round Rock and Austin has their own veteran advisory boards. So now we are getting the veterans there. We just have to let them know, hey, we're here to help. What can we do for you, and what can you do for us?
And I know the, the veterans organizations, the various organizations here in town are very involved through partnering with other services organizations in town. I know I see veterans at, at every event that I attend, so I'm really excited that we get to formalize this relationship between veterans organizations and the city. I think that's going to make, make us all work better together.
Most definitely.
Very excited about it.
It's amazing what ideas come up on Saturday mornings.
That's right.
Motion to approve. You're doing a motion?
Please.
Motion to approve six C is presented.
What's that?
Like, nobody hears us over here. We're making motions left and right, nobody hears us.
I heard you speak. I heard you speak.
Mr. McLeod, real quick.
Yes, sir.
One of your leading members has a birthday today, don't they? Do they not?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes, sir. Philip?
Has he turned 79 or 80?
Seventy-eight.
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 Thank you very much, Ellen, and congratulations, and we look forward to some great things with our veteran community.
I thought you were going to start singing, Caesar. I thought you were going to start singing. Oh, no, no, no. Kim took the mic away from me one time when I tried that, so.
All right. Item six D, discuss and consider action to elect a mayor pro temp per city charter section 3.06.
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may, as the, the current mayor pro temp, I've really enjoyed holding this position for the last three years. It's, it's been an honor to, to back you up, especially at events. I think it was last week I was at a Nature Fest where I got to talk to a whole bunch of third graders and read a proclamation. They like the talking more than the proclamation, but.
UFCU?
I got to cut a ribbon here last week, and, and in the past, the veterans organizations even invited me to, to give a speech in your stead. So it's been, it's been an honor. I did mention when I, when I took this job, I think it's good to promote continuity, it's good to promote growth among the council members, and so in my, the final year of my council term, I think it would be appropriate for me to, to hand that off to, to someone else. I've also thankfully filed some, some papers with Trista to work on my, my next election, so I'm going to be focused on that here for the next little bit. But I think it's important that the mayor pro temp is, is someone who is, is focused on Flugerville, who is focused on, on growth, who is focused on making a difference in the community. I'm going to tell you, there, there is a, a member here who I've watched grow over the last few years, and so I would like to move that we appoint council member Holliday as mayor pro temp in the city of Flugerville.
I was going to say, I was going to second that. The only person I thought of was, was council member Wees. Well, he doesn't like me.
No, I like you fine. I mean, we can talk about the demeanor.
I've changed a lot, right? You can have you through a beard. Well, I think either one of you would make an excellent mayor pro temp.
No doubt. Support you 100%. It's up to you.
I would be honored.
I have a motion in a second.
All right, there we go. I'll do it for Rudy.
Rudy.
Kim accepted.
Well, nobody hears us over here, man.
You can't second anything. Okay, motion carried. Congratulations. And I might add that, well, I don't know. I mean, I've served a number of years here, but I don't remember ever having a female mayor pro temp, and much less, an African-American mayor pro temp.
Sorry?
No.
Well, she wasn't.
Congratulations.
She was, yeah.
All right, item, Trista, how are we going to play this now? Six E, review representation and discuss and consider action to approve a resolution appointing a city council legislative subcommittee.
And so at the last meeting for appointments for this subcommittee, Jim McDonald, David Rogers, and Rudy Mateer are the current members.
Okay. Well, obviously, Mr. McDonald's not here anymore, so.
Many of our, our committees only hold two people. I, I think that can be appropriate. I would be amicable unless someone else wants to serve to leave Mr. Rogers and Mr. Mateer on that committee.
Doug and I, Doug and I were talking about that before.
Yeah, unless someone else is interested in serving on the legislative committee.
I, I think two is appropriate, but are you two going to do your job?
Yeah.
I'm looking at one person right now.
Rudy is, Rudy is great, and I have, I have connections that nobody else here has, so I think I'll be, I'll be helpful.
I think they cover the gamut.
Didn't answer my question.
That's part of the gamut, the legislature. Although.
Those concern, and I'll voice it, those concerned that you weren't responding to staff or doing your job, so that's why we put Rudy on there. Are you going to do the job?
Oh.
Or?
I did the job before there was a job, yeah.
Didn't answer my question. You're not answering my question.
You're giving me lawyer talk.
It's like he's an attorney.
I was doing the job this morning before you were awake.
Oh, okay, okay, just say yes.
Yeah.
All right, here we go.
I do, I do have interest in.
You, you do have interest in serving on the legislative?
And, and you have a, a relationship with our senator, which.
Newly, yeah.
Yeah, and that, that might be helpful as well.
I'd say the question before the board is, is two or three?
I don't.
I feel two.
I think two. I just, again, I know, here, I'll, I'll put it out there, I know Rudy's at the Capitol all the time. Will either one of you be able to be at the Capitol as much as you need to be during a legislative session? Because this is going to be a big session. Yeah, they're already after us.
Oh, yeah.
Nonpartisan, David.
Well, we, we, between Rudy and I, we will work both sides.
That's a natural question.
I am nonpartisan.
Well, I mean, that's, that's, that's an option, so. Council member Mateer, council, council member Ryan would also be a.
The fighting duo.
If we are, if we are interested in two.
I, I think I did a, a pretty good job of working with members from both, both parties and in both houses in the last session.
Well, may I get a clarification on that? Councilman, can you kind of give us some successes?
Well, we got 117 votes in the House for, for one of our bills. The other one was, was killed by the, the committee chairman, and that one never got a hearing in the House, but.
But that committee chairman is gone. So I expect that we'll do well there on the Senate side. We've spoken to several members already, and we've got very positive responses from the chairman of the relevant committee. And to be clear, I understand the nature of state politics and the current environment there. And the more conservative side is going to be very aggressive this next legislature, which is going to be critical to cities like Flugerville and other communities throughout the state. And that's why we work very closely with the Texas Municipal League. And I think, Rudy, you were on the Legislative Policy Group. And I've been there before, so I know that's a lengthy process to go through a number of potential bills and bills that are being considered and how they'll affect cities. Some good, some not good, obviously. So I think the end result is, it's almost like going to Vegas. You never know if you're going to win or lose, you know.
The House always wins?
The House always wins.
I guess I'd like to hear from Councilwoman Ryan. But if you're chosen, what would you like to accomplish for the city? Or would you be able to commit to being there as much as we need you to be there?
Well, the good news is I am self-employed, so I'm my own boss. I read the TML summary of our goals, and I felt that I could advocate for those. I did testify at a hearing in the last legislative session. So I also want to learn. So if I were to be appointed, I would prefer it to be with three people. But if you'd rather have two other people, that's fine as well. But in order to grow, you need to have new people come on and learn and have more advocates and not less, especially if there's a large volume.
I think one of the. I feel like through this session, we should all get the call to go down and testify through our, whether it's through our advocates, through our consultants. We, we're all going to need to be there to speak at some point in time. I think this committee, you know, from an expectation perspective, what do we say that this does? I don't know that we have a statement of purpose. Where's our statement of purpose? seeks to coordinate and strategize, collaborate with staff to review legislative strategies, review legislative agendas, and provide recommendations to council, assist staff in identifying legislation that may require oral written testimony, provide oral written testimony on bills that concern the city, and recommend to the city council a consultant to provide assistance. So I think the rest of that, we all do, right? We all need to be down there testifying these days. I guess from that perspective, I would ask Ms. Ryan, do you feel you need to be part of the committee or part of the council in this effort?
I'm happy to help wherever the council wishes me to help.
Ooh, don't say that.
You're a member of the council, so we get to use the royal league here now.
I'm willing to help and step forward to add assistance.
Let me get a closure right here. If we're coming across, I think this is where we need to do, Dave, Doug, we need to get right up on the mic. That's how they're not hearing us. If we're coming across as aggressive, it's because this is going to be a big session. And, you know, we want assurances that, we know Rudy's going to be there. And I think both of you would do wonderful. I just, we just need those assurances that we need to have the people on there who are going to work across party aisles. I know Melody, you will. And be able to be there in general and work with everybody. I mean, would you consider three, councilwoman, mayor pro temp? Yes, okay.
All right. Move to appoint Mr. Rogers, Ms. Ryan, Mr. Mateer to the legislative committee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on this item.
Yeah, I got to call you at first. Look at that. I got to stop calling you. Now I got to stop looking at you and thinking of you.
Motion carried, thank you.
Okay.
All right. 6F, review representation, discuss, consider action to approve a resolution appointing City Council Facilities Committee.
And currently on that committee are Victor Gonzalez and Jim McDonald.
Mayor, I'm assuming you still want to be on that?
I would still like to continue, yes, please.
Mayor pro temp, would you be interested?
No, thank you. I would like to remain on my current committees.
I think I could do. Yeah, I'd do it. Yeah, it'd be good.
Were you on the facilities committee way back when?
He's the OG, remember?
Yeah, yeah, 2022.
David and I came on in 2020. We did it for, I did it for two years, you did it for one, and then I stopped.
They're the reason why we have where City Hall is.
Well, David's the reason.
David's the reason.
David's the reason.
But I appreciate it.
You know what? He was the more vocal.
He doesn't want to own it now. He doesn't.
That is true.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Mayor Victor Gonzalez and Councilmember Caesar Ruiz to the facilities subcommittee.
Second. Oh, wait, you said that can't second.
Yeah. Motion and second on this item. Motion carried. Y'all can have subcommittee meetings without even leaving the block. There you go. Our next item is review and representation, discuss and consider action to approve a resolution appointing City Council Special Events Subcommittee.
Currently on that subcommittee are Victor Gonzalez and Kimberly Holiday.
I would like to remain on the committee. I love Flugerville Parks.
I will yield my position to anybody else wishing.
And Ms. Ryan, or Councilman Ryan said specifically at the, whatever the council would like, would you be interested in this committee?
You like parks and shade. You'd love it.
I think you deal with some of the budget on that, right?
You like parks and shade.
There's finances in it.
Finances and everything. Yes, I would be willing to serve if no one else feels strongly about it. Serving it instead.
Okay, motion.
Wait, maybe she might want to think about CapCog.
No.
That's the easier one.
Okay. Motion to appoint councilmember.
I'll second that one.
Okay, well, there we go. You got the people.
She needs to hear you say it, Rudy.
Oh, she needs to hear people. Councilmember Ryan, the mayor pro temp. Holiday. I'm laughing. I forgot, we actually need names for this.
Well. Councilmember Ryan. Or did you vote?
No, it was me.
Oh, okay, somebody, I couldn't tell.
It blew around it, right?
Motion carried. All right. On to more fun. Review representation, item 6H, representation, discuss, consider action to appoint three representatives to the Capital Area Council of Government's General Assembly.
Councilmember Weiss, you're currently on the executive committee, correct?
She's going to tell us who's there.
We have Doug Weiss, Caesar Ruiz, and Jim McDonald.
And you're on the executive committee.
I am on the executive committee, assuming everything goes as planned in December. I'll be an officer. I tell the general assembly the main responsibilities that members have. In September, you're invited to a launch where you approve the budget. In December, you're invited to a launch where you approve the officers in the executive committee positions. Otherwise, the executive committee, which I currently serve on by benefit of us holding, well, I should say, member cities between 50 and 100,000 people get seats on that, so I do fill the Flugerville role there. The executive committee meets monthly and is actually also the Capital Area Emergency Communications District Board. And there's a foundation board in there that I also serve on as part of that. So if you're looking for a committee where you get two launches and you vote on a budget and nominations, then it's a great role for the general assembly.
Two launches.
Two launches.
But we want you on there because you're executive.
I do hope to remain on that, yes.
I would, I don't wish to remain on there.
Are you on the Clean Air Coalition?
I am in the Clean Air Coalition. And it's been nice, it's been wonderful. It's just, I don't seek, I don't desire to do it anymore. For another year.
Do you want to stay on the Clean Air? Because the Clean Air Coalition is a two-year appointment, I believe.
Oh, is it?
You need to be on the general assembly to be on the Clean Air Coalition? I don't know.
Was it a two-year vote? Did I, okay, if I committed.
Yeah, you're stuck.
All right, then I'm stuck.
You're stuck.
I didn't think I heard you say my name. That's why I was like, what?
Yeah, yeah.
You get to be on it another year.
Yeah, you have the benefit, so yes.
I do get a free lunch.
And then we'd be looking to.
No, you get two.
Two. I have to get one.
And you get quarterly Clean Air Coalition lunches.
We do, and they are very good, so.
You don't have to sell me, I'm stuck. You've supposed to be giving us our updates.
Yeah. I'll be getting myself on there.
Fleet, great fleet management happening over on the Clean Air Coalition as well as airborne management. So Jim was also on there, so we will be looking to fill that other spot. I'm curious if anyone else is interested in that. It's a, I think, first Wednesday of the, actually, that doesn't matter so much.
Councilmember Rogers, are you interested?
Well, I am, but I would defer to the new mayor pro temp if she's interested.
No, thank you.
Okay, well.
Victor, I know you've served on that before as well, no?
I've served.
I'm already on two committees.
Oh, this, yeah, that's okay. I think I did four one time.
Yeah, it doesn't work into my schedule even with the free lunch.
It's only quarterly, so you only have to meet quarterly.
Well, no, it's not even quarterly. It's September and December.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
You're only quarterly because you.
You're quarterly for Clean Air.
So it's only twice.
It's twice, twice a year. Mayor pro temp? Can't talk you into it?
Well, no, if they moved it from South Austin to Central or Flugerville, that'd be great.
Well, we have convened.
You're on the executive committee, you need to make a recommendation.
We have convened, I will report back that we have convened the committee, and I am on the committee for relocation of the CapCog offices. So I'll be representing that. So maybe, but it'll be a while.
Councilman Rogers?
Sure.
Councilmember Rogers.
Sign me up.
All right. I move that we appoint myself, Caesar, and David as members to the general.
I'll second that motion.
I don't think we have a name myself.
Doug Weiss.
Councilmember Weiss.
You might have just booted yourself out.
Okay, you want to stand?
Okay, motion carried.
You'd be great there.
Da-da-da-da. 6J, review representation, discuss, consider action to approve a resolution designating a City of Flugerville City Council representative to the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization Campo Transportation Policy Board.
We skipped six I.
Oh, did I skip six I? I'm sorry. Let me go back. Review, representation, discuss, and consider action to appoint a city council member to serve on the Community Advancement Network Board of Directors.
Kimberly Holiday is currently serving.
Move to reappoint Mayor Pro Tem Holiday.
I got three seconds. I think you're.
There we go, cool.
Oh, I was too far away. Okay, there you go.
There were four, you just couldn't hear Caesar.
Did he speak in his microphone? She heard David.
What? He's the closest.
But he always bumbles. He's like, am I taping her?
Motion carried. Come on, guys. 6J. Okay, I'll repeat it. That was a long one. Review, representation, and discuss and consider action to approve a resolution designating a City of Flugerville City Council representative on the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization Campo Transportation Policy Board.
And Rudy Mateer is currently serving with Victor Gonzalez as the designated alternate.
And then any council member can serve as alternate following that. Mr. Mayor Gonzalez, you wish to remain the alternate?
I will yield.
You're going to stay on Rudy?
Yeah, I'm chair next year.
Okay.
Do you know those issues in and out, Rudy? Couldn't have you on there.
I would be happy to serve as alternate, but I have a feeling I won't be doing much if Rudy's there.
Well, never mind.
I move that we appoint Councilwoman Terre as the member and Councilwoman Weiss as the designated alternate.
Second.
Did you see what he did?
You heard him, right?
I got to get all the points on this.
Wayne Verdis still put someone else down. Now, she got you.
What happened?
She got you. I always.
Always got me. She heard me, she looked at me when I said it.
I always expect her. All right, all right.
Second thoughts.
One more time. There we go.
Got to stab at three. Motion carried. Okay. Fun and games are over. Yeah. Okay, Trista, let's review the consent items, please.
Yes, starting out, we'll do 5A, approving an ordinance on first and final reading with a caption reading ordinance of the City of Flugerville, Texas, adopting the Third Amendment to the FY24 budget for the City of Flugerville and providing an effective date.
Did you have any specific questions, Councilmember Rogers?
So I'm curious why we're going to go ahead and amend the budget rather than just noting the variances from the adopted budget and leaving the budget in place? Is there a specific statutory or charter provision that requires that?
Sure, go ahead, Tracy.
Yeah, I mean, it is best practices. It's going to be in our annual comprehensive financial report as a budget actual report. We adopt the budget by department, and so therefore, we would like to see the departments in balance. But as you can see, we've made the adjustments in the general fund. We've made the adjustments in the water waste water fund to balance those out using other savings from other departments. You would never want to step forward with your financial report with departments out of budget.
Is there a reason why we shouldn't just do a budget actual where we say, okay, here's what we had as the initial budget, and then here's what we have as the actual? And wouldn't that provide more transparency if we're saying, this is what we adopted, this is what our original plan was? This is how it turned out? There's a difference there, obviously. I'm just wondering.
The financial report is, the format of the financial report is a required format. It does show the original, the amended budget and the actual and the variance. So it does reflect all those columns.
So why do we have the extra step?
Because we want to show that we have those funds available through the departments. If not, we would be taking it out of fund balance.
So transparency.
Yeah.
Well, so generally, the use of the budget is to control spending. So amending the budget after you've spent the money is only about a reporting issue and not the underlying goal of the budget, which is to control spending. And it's actually, I believe it's less transparent to move budget around after the fact because it's not telling the true story of what we anticipated our spending or revenues were going to be and what they actually were. So I don't understand the purpose besides, I mean, to make it look better on the financial report, I believe is less transparent than to report what actually happened.
I mean, the actuals will be actual. It will show what actually happened.
Well, but the budget variance will be different. I mean, it already happened, so we should just explain why there was a budget to actual variance, not move it around so there is no variance.
So it will show the original budget and the amended budget in the report.
So my other question is, why, if we are going to have these variances, why are we approving them after the fact instead of before it happens or when we? or when we first anticipate they're going to happen?
So most of these expenditures are through personnel and through legal services, those were the main ones that I needed to adjust. As far as the personnel goes, we, we had identified some stuff that had been, um, excluded from the original budget. Um, but instead of multiple budget amendments throughout the year, we waited until we actually knew the amounts that we needed to amend.
Now, I'm curious specifically about the, uh, variance in the social security numbers, why, why was that off as much as it was?
Was an error in the original calculations, but all of those are gonna be over if wages are over, so, um.
But there wasn't, there wasn't error in the original calculation?
Um, there had to have been because, yeah.
It seemed like the size didn't match up any other way.
And, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, but there was additional wages paid, which is gonna increase all benefits.
And that was, uh, uh, special projects, do we have a breakdown on what those special projects were?
There, there were special pays, for instance, like holiday pay, um, was not in the original budget. And that, that can add up when you're talking about as many officers as we have. So, uh, sick benefit, vacation buyback, so these are some of the benefits that we offer and we pay, but were not included in the original budget.
But shouldn't the, the vacation pay in particular, wouldn't that, uh, wouldn't, uh, I'm sorry, the, um, the, the holiday pay, uh, wouldn't that be something we should?
Absolutely.
We should have that in the original budget upfront?
So, so a lot of this stuff was identified when we were working through the fiscal twenty-five budget, so all of these things have been included in the fiscal twenty-five.
So we're gonna pick up those mistakes and they won't be repeated next year?
It's already been corrected.
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
So I had a, a question on the police budget, um, because I, I don't have access to a more updated report besides what was in the fiscal twenty-five budget as projected for fiscal twenty twenty-four. And in the police department, it only showed, um, a, a variance of a hundred and thirty thousand over budget, but the total of the budget amendments was seven hundred and fifty thousand, so I don't know if there was a, a large change in actuals for twenty-four between projections, but, um, I guess that doesn't make, uh, unclear as to why we have seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in budget variance when we're only, when it's only a hundred and thirty thousand over.
Yeah, I would say the projections are off, these are actual figures. So I will go back and look at the projections, but these are actual.
Well, we only have, uh, uh, what the budget amendment is gonna be, not the actual report of what. So I would request that in the future, that we have a financial report to see what the variance are and to see what the amounts are before we, um, are approving a budget amendment, because I have no idea, um, what it looks like now, um, beyond what the, the twenty, the, you know, the projections are.
Okay. So Tracy, let me ask, because I, I hear you guys, um, exchanging information, or at least trying to get information, because I'm not a necessarily a budget person, I'm not a CPA. Uh, I don't have any debt, so I don't have to worry about keeping up with money, other than when it comes in. Uh, uh, so these variances that, you know, that, uh, Ms. Ryan's talking about, I mean, I'm sure we've had those over the years.
Yes.
Throughout the year. So i- if those are the hurdles that, and, and I'm using terminology that I, I would understand, uh, or if those are the hurdles that we know are there or going to be there, is there some way to not, are they inevitable, I guess is what I'm saying?
Yeah, for this particular year, like I stated, we, we recognize some of these during our twenty twenty-five budget process and have made sure that these are included, um, and are gonna monitor the twenty-five budget to see, to make sure that we are much closer in our projections. Uh, but these are just some things that came up during the process.
And you, but we do anticipate they will continue to come up.
There will always be variances for overtime, it's very, um, you know, you can't always predict what's gonna happen, I mean, one of the things we had was, um, you know, a lot of vacancies in dispatch, which meant those dispatchers that we actually did have had to work overtime, that's a very critical position. So it just depend, it really just depends.
No, I under, I understand, and that makes perfect sense.
Yeah.
Obviously, you have to fill the gaps and, and you have to do it somehow, and, you know, there's money expended to do that. Okay, gotcha.
So the, the, the budget is a best guess or estimate regarding how a, a fiscal year will run, but the reality situation is that there will be issues or concerns that come up that will allow for variances to occur, and to Councilmember Ryan's point is to be able to go and see those things a little sooner rather than later, but ultimately, realistically speaking, what you are showing and illustrating is the reality to the citizens regarding what is the actual actuals are at the same time as what the budgetary projections were for there as well. Um, I think we've established for years now that we, we're pretty good to, you know, regarding what our estimated budgets are and how those actuary figures look like for that as well, and I think we've actually got high marks from anybody who's actually audited our budgets on those things, but, I mean, there's always room for improvement moving forward, but I, I mean, your explanation makes a lot of sense, so I appreciate that.
Motion to approve. Oh, I got, I got one more thing. Uh, Tracy, I, I know in, in prior years, uh, you know, I, I came down pretty hard on the projections and it sounds like shoring up those projections, uh, you've done a tremendous job in, in recognizing that going forward, so I do want to appreciate that. Um, or let you know that I appreciate you for that. Um, I do, I, I am curious, does this budget amendment authorize the expenditure of, of some of these funds? Or was, uh, was the expenditure of this already approved by prior action by the budget, by, by charter? Are we writing any checks based on this?
We, it's kind of a retroaction because it is, it's updating the appropriations to the right buckets.
Okay, but otherwise, the.
Net change at the end of the day, but, you know.
It didn't exceed the, the budget, so everything was already, um, everyone already got paid their overtime because it was within the totality of budget, and we're not actually making changes that cause us to, to cut any new checks.
Right, at the bottom line, the general fund is zero, like there, it's a net change of zero.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So when I, I did look at the, the projections in the twenty-five budget, it was projecting that we're gonna have over six million dollar surplus or revenues over expenses, so if we have enough revenue to cover our expenses, then this is just to, um, reduce variances in the various departments?
Yes. That's what it is.
But the variances also tell us where we need to budget more effectively in, in the future, which is the value of having the variances exist as.
Well, when we acknowledge the variances and actually do use that information to, to provide a better budget.
Yeah, I, but it's, it's informative for the public to see that this was the budget that we based our property tax on, and this is what happened, and so it doesn't change anything that.
The bottom line budget didn't change, so it's the same budget that you projected your property taxes on.
Um, let me get back to the, uh, dispatch question, you, you raised that as a, as a particular area of concern. Uh, does, uh, have those dispatch vacancies been filled? Okay, so do we need to make some, some changes in our recruiting or our, our pay structure to the dispatch officers?
That's why they're off.
Okay, so that we, we were, we, we were not competitive in the market with those, but we are now?
Yes.
Okay, all right. That's very important.
Yes.
Hole to fill, thank you.
Motion to approve. Second.
I don't have any further questions, I'd, uh, I'd move to. Oh, I have a motion and.
And you already got a second. So if you did have any more questions.
Further discussion, right?
Oh, to be fair, yeah, you could have got a further discussion.
Don't let him know that.
Motion carried, thank you.
Next is item five D, approving an ordinance on second reading with a caption reading in ordinance authorizing the lease of city property located at one oh one East Piccon Flugerville, providing cumulative repealer and severability clauses, providing for open meeting and establishing an effective date.
Any particular questions?
All right, this, this is, this is the Dalton's property and we're, uh, authorizing the, the, uh, the lease of one half of that property for exactly six months. Yeah, and that's the, uh, and there, that, that is a six-month, no extension lease, that's how that's finally.
Yes, sir.
Put together?
Yeah, explicitly said no extension.
All right.
Is there, um, is it appropriate for me to ask, what is the plan for this property after six months?
I, that's what we're doing during that lease, as a lease, leasing it back to him is making that plan.
Okay, so the plan is TBD?
The plan is to plan.
Okay.
I believe is that included in the Hyatt Brown item?
So that the, uh, cigar bar will continue in operation through the first half of next year, so am I?
For six months from now.
Correctly, okay.
And that's in, and it's included in the, um, the contract with Hyatt Brown to take a look at what are some options for it. We've also had conversations in the retail market, so all of that will come soon.
I thought you, I thought that's why you pulled five I too, because explicitly says that, um, that's what they were doing, that's one of the things they're looking at.
Yeah.
In that contract.
Were there any concerns with the, the language in the lease?
Oh, I did have one. Um, non-Chris, um. Just, uh, you know, and, and I saw we have it in a couple of other ones, which is great, but, um, force majeure. Just, if we can please make sure that force majeure clause is in everything, like, and I try and, you know, I know, I'm not an attorney here, right? Like, I'm a policymaker, so I try not to scrutinize the contracts of that, but I saw in other contracts that we do have the force majeure on, uh, on there, so I was like, if we can please include that moving forward, and I know that's gonna be the standard, also you'll make sure. Please do so.
Easy.
I missed that, Rudy, did we not have a force?
We don't have a force majeure on this one.
In this.
Yeah, but we have it on the other one, at least, I saw the other ones, we have force majeure on there.
Maybe we need to, uh, to pull this back and add that.
I mean, I would, I would just, I would just say.
Is a, is a force majeure appropriate if we have a fixed length, six-month deal?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Boy, what, didn't you listen to that?
I did, I did, but the pandemic, I mean, the end of six months is over in this, on this lease agreement.
So that, that taught the industry, like, we were like, okay, we need to make sure.
All right, I guess, uh, Charlie with, with less hair. Um, is there, do we need to, do we need to add this, uh, do we need to add a force majeure to this lease, or what would you recommend for us?
Oh, I'm really getting it tonight. So, yeah, I, the, the overwhelming, um, spirit of the lease is to protect the city, the every, almost every provision is directed at protecting the city. And in my legal opinion, the, on the facts presented, the lease is fine, there's plenty of protections there, um, covering a lot of different angles, so, uh, even if you ran into a pandemic-type situation, the city would still have many protections in the document, uh, to work through that.
So let me ask you, the, the agreement, the legal document that we're talking about, who approved and wrote that?
So, um, I worked on most of it, and, um.
So you didn't think the force majeure was necessary for that?
Well, it's, it's a document that we've used before and in real estate, depending on the situation, because the, the way the lease is drafted is to protect the landlord, if you will, and, um.
Okay, well, I'm good with your explanation, but I'm just saying, what our legal gentleman on the dais are saying is something that maybe you guys should have put in there to begin with.
It, it, it can be helpful, um, depending on the situation, um, on a short-term item, I don't think it's compelling.
Uh, um, you know, there was a lot of, of. I, I do, uh, I do a lot of work in, in, uh, landlord tenant and evictions. Um, and there was a lot of interference in, uh, pre-existing contracts by, uh, local governments, particularly in terms of, but also even at the federal level, um, interfering with the right of landlords to evict tenants. Um, not generally in commercial, uh, situations, but I could, I could see a situation where that could arise again. And if we don't have some kind of force majeure, uh, language in here, that could be a problem.
Well, it could be a problem, but not necessarily a problem.
Yeah.
No.
It's not a problem unless some sort of, you know, force majeure event happens, which are rare, but obviously have happened in the time we've been on council.
How big is the risk?
Yeah.
Is this, is this a?
Gentlemen, I'm sorry.
May I, I have a comment, but I would prefer legal counsel, um, may I go in executive session?
This is the type of thing that can be, uh, with legal questions could be.
I have a legal.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's adjourn to executive session on this particular item. No action was taken.
Sounds so loud. Motion to approve five D is presented.
Second, motion second to approve. Motion carried.
Next is item five E, approving an ordinance on second reading with a caption reading in ordinance authorizing the lease of city property to Griffin Swinton Town LLC, providing cumulative repealer and severability clauses, providing for open meeting and establishing an effective date.
Councilmember Rogers, particular question, she may.
Okay, um, so just to, to be clear, this is the lease of the, uh, the property where we're, we're building the new city hall?
Yes.
Yeah.
Move to approve.
Wow, that couldn't be asked before.
Motion and second to approve item. Yep. Motion carried.
And last item pulled from consent is five I, approving a professional services agreement with Hyatt Brown in the amount of one hundred forty-five thousand, one hundred eighty-four dollars for advisory services and assessment of redevelopment opportunities within the core of downtown Flugerville and authorizing the city manager to execute the same.
So, uh, my concern about this, uh, actually, uh, piggybacks on some comments, uh, the mayor made at the, uh, uh, the last meeting about the fact that we've had a number of these kind of plans in the past and they've ultimately, uh, ended up collecting dust. Um, I think, Mr. Mayor, you said there were four or five of these plans in the time that you've been on council?
Hmm, talking about downtown plan?
Yeah.
There's only been one.
Oh, only, only one downtown plan. Um, so, uh.